Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting for the City of Utica Tuesday, December 10th, 2024. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Ryan, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Torenzi.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendino.
Here.
All present, and we have a quorum. At this point in the meeting, we open up the floor for anyone in the public that has comments for council. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. I know we have one guest that wants to say something. Commissioner Groth, welcome to our council meeting tonight.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Groth. I am the Macomb County Commissioner, and I represent beautiful Utica. Usually, I don't come to the meeting, but today is special, special. It's regarding Mr. Ron Robinson. I want to recognize him for his service to the community and congratulate him on his win for the state rep. So you were a great asset to the City of Utica, but we're very proud you're going to be representing us at Lansing. So we'll see each other, we'll work probably together, but today, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I want to recognize you today, so.
Thank you very much. Wow. Should I go down there, or should I?
What up?
What up?
Should I go down there?
Yeah.
Yeah, go down.
Give a nice picture.
Thank you for allowing me.
Of course.
I had no idea this was happening. Thank you so much.
That's why we kept a secret with the mayor.
Right here. Take a look at that.
Right away.
Thank you so much. That's very nice. Thank you so much.
That's for the new office at Lansing.
Oh.
American Christmas to all you, and I will see you all on Saturday at the Christmas lighting. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Groth. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council? Mr. Golaska? If you could give us your name and address, sir.
Tom Golaska, 45259 Cass Avenue. I'd like to encourage council to pass the request for the water, the sewer. I think it's a no lose unless they close the doors and empty out the tanks completely. Otherwise, we're going to constantly be collecting sewer charges from as they replenish the water. So we won't lose unless they close their doors, which I hope they never do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, is this one you'd like the builders to speak about, 50 to council?
It's not on the agenda, so that would be at the end of the meeting. This is just for items that are on the agenda. Anyone else? All right. I would be looking for a motion to approve all items in consent.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We have no unfinished business under correspondence. Sadly, we have two longtime members of our DPW, both retiring. You'll see a letter from Ken and Ricky in our packet. I'd be looking for a motion to receive and file.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Ryan. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And as we just found out from Commissioner Groth, sadly, we will be losing Ron Robinson to Lansing. He submitted his letter of resignation effective tomorrow, December 11th, 2024. I would be looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Ron Robinson effective December 11th.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
No.
Ryan.
I know.
Oh, boy. Robinson.
You're not saying yes.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Sadly, yes. Motion carries.
Sorry, buddy. Oh, you go.
Got you.
Next in your packet is the 2025 schedule for our city council meetings. You'll notice that after speaking with most members of council, I'm also proposing that we move the meetings up to 7:00 PM. We're all getting a little old, and sometimes these meetings run long. Well, except for Councilman O'Donnell.
Hey, whoa. Hey, with me leaving, the average age is increasing.
So first, I'd like a motion to approve the 2025 city council meeting dates as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Sakura, support by Deion. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. And finally, a motion to approve the 2025 city council meeting time to be moved up to 7:00 PM.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Torenzi, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a request from Legacy Aquarium for a rebate on sewer charges for their initial fill. And I believe we do have Mr. Chuck Finley on Zoom or Teams. Can you hear us, Mr. Finley?
Yes, I can. Appreciate it, council, for me to speak today. So on behalf, I believe Lori should have presented a document there for you guys, but our initial fill is estimated to be around 100,000 gallons to fill the initial exhibits. The way the city fills is the amount of water that's used is billed for the amount of sewer as well, presuming that all that water is going down the sewer. The initial fill will not be going down the sewer, but will be remaining in the exhibit. So that 100,000 gallons will not ever make the way down the sewer. We will do monthly water changes called back washes. When we do that, at those times, those are an estimated 10% a week, 40% a month. That water will end up making its way down the sewer. We're not asking for any type of rebate on that, just on the initial 100,000 gallons, just because we do not feel that it's fair to us to pay sewer charge that the city's not having to temper the water with it any way.
I understand you're saying that water will go back in when you do your flush and refill, which means that will be metered and that will be charged, okay? It's not going to be immediate at the first time, but the city is going to incur cost when you do your fills. The new water that comes in, yes, you will pay both, okay? The water and the sewer charge. But you're asking honestly, on the water that goes into that system for the rest of the residents here, to pay for that. And it's, there's going to be a charge. You can say it's 10%. Well, guess what? That $10,000 that just went through the system and is being metered, we are going to pay the sanitary sewer charge on it. So to ask that the whole amount be waived, I will not vote for that. I will consider a partial waiver of that fee. You presented all kinds of meters and things you clamp onto the pipes. That's just way too hard, too much involved. So I will entertain a partial rebate on the sewer charge, but again, we are going to bear the brunt. When that water does get flushed, when you change your water into tanks, whatever goes in, we are going to pay. It just won't be at that initial point.
Yeah, I understand that. Again, we're not asking for a rebate on that 10%. We're asking for a rebate on the initial fill of the 100,000 gallons that will never make its way down the sewer.
How do you say it's not? Please explain to me. When you say you're going to have to refill or backwash and it's up to 10%, there is going to be 10,000 gallons that is going into the system. Plain and simple. And it will be, it will be metered.
And that will be new water that will be metered in, and that will be new water that will be flushed down the drain.
You are putting the old water back into the sewer system that we will be metered at that point, and we will have to pay for it.
That is incorrect. It is new water. If you have a 10 gallon tank and you initially fill that up with 10 gallons of water, that water there never leaves, right? You bring 10 more gallons in to do your change, then that 10 gallons would then go down the sewer system.
Which.
The initial 10 gallons would never go down.
The initial.
You can only hold 10 gallons in a tank. You can't hold 11 gallons in a tank of water.
We're not saying you're putting another 10 gallons in. When you refill, yes, you will be charged that because eventually, the next time you do it, you're also going to backfill, and it's going to go through the system. We're going to be metered and we're going to be charged by DESW, whatever it is, Detroit Water and Sewer. That water will be going through, plain and simple. You can tell me I'm wrong, I really am not. So take it for what it's worth. You and I are going to disagree. Once it goes into that system, it's being used. You're putting new water in, which when, which you're then paying to discharge it. So at that point, it's a ongoing charge.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I have a question.
I don't know if he can, you might have to speak up.
Okay, sir. I want to make sure I understand this right, and I can see where Mr. Sakura is saying. It sounds like this is two purchases. You want to rebate on the first purchase, 100,000. And when you come to buy 10,000 gallons more, the next, when you refill your tanks, you expect no rebate on that 10,000. You pay for $10,000 with the water, and you pay for $10,000 with the processing, the sewer water. You want just initial $100,000 rebate on one purchase of water. On your second purchase of water of 10,000 gallons, you'll pay for 10,000 gallons to buy it, and you pay for 10,000 gallons to flush it. Is that, am I correct in that, or no?
Yeah, that's what I was.
That's right. So it sounds like two purchases. You want to rebate on the first purchase only.
But who is paying for when that initial 10,000 on the flush? We gave it, he's asking for no fee on that water. It is going to go in the sewer, which we are then going to pay to process. Everything after that point, he is then paying for new water in and the future flushing of that new water that came in. But you have, whatever you put in that sewer, is going to be charged to the City of Utica when you flush it.
Sure.
Plain and simple. So if you want to be kind and say you might give a discount on it, because they're going to be a good neighbor, but just remember, we talk about precedent all the time.
Yep.
Okay? So all of a sudden, we get a hotel with a swimming pool, says, you know what? We're going to flush our pool. When we come back in, it's really going to stay in there the next time we do it. Do we go through this now with everybody?
Yeah.
It puts a burden on one, a water department that's already burdened, okay? And the people are paying for past sins, okay? And we're setting precedent for everybody to come to us for a deal.
I just want to make sure I understand what the gentleman's asking for. Okay.
Mr. Finley, what happens if you have a tank that?
The rebate that we're, I apologize, the rebate we're looking for is around $1,200. It is for the initial fill of the 100,000 gallons and for nothing more.
Two questions. What happens if one of the tanks leaks? Wouldn't you have to drain that tank to be able to do repairs?
It depends on how it leaks and where it leaks. Most leaks can be repaired from the outside, and so they would not have to be drained.
And then my other question would be, maybe I don't understand the flush, the backfill and the flush. When you're, is that to, when you're doing that, are you lowering the level 10% and then refilling it?
That is correct.
So you really are?
Again, again, I can't, I can't put 11 gallons of water in a 10 gallon tank, but I would have to lower that down to nine gallons, put more water through the system, add that gallon of water back to the system, so.
So that 10% that you're lowering, you did not pay sewer charges for. Do you see what I'm saying? When you're lowering the tank 10% or whatever it is for your backfill and flush, under your proposition, you're not paying the sewer fees on that water. So that's 10% of 100,000 gallons.
That is correct, but we would be paying 10%. We would be paying for the new 10% of the water that is coming into the, into the system.
Right, but you didn't pay the sewer char, you didn't pay sewer charges on the initial water, and that 10% is going into our sewer system. If you fill it up to 10 gallons and you don't pay sewer charges, and then you take a gallon away that's going into the sewer system, you did not pay sewer charges for that water.
But also, the new 10% that's going in is also not going into the sewer.
But that is going to then cover the cost of when he does it again.
In the end, at the end of time, when they empty the tanks 50 years from now, hypothetical, that's when he's going to pay that percentage.
No, because they never paid the initial fill.
Well, I'm saying, the last purchase is when you're, it's collecting that money on the very last purchase of water.
No.
Your hands are tied by Great Lakes Water Authority. They charge you for what comes in, and they're automatically going to charge you on the sewer charge on the asset.
We got, we can't have commentary from the audience.
Mayor, I agree with what you're saying. I do. I just want to say that.
If you fill a tank, and God forbid, let's say, you know, something happens and they only stay in business for a month. They fill all the tanks, and we forgive all the sewer fees, and then they lower all the tanks. They have to empty all their tanks for whatever reason. They never paid sewer on any of that water on the initial fill.
Initial 100,000, understood.
So, Mr. Sakura, what are you proposing?
Again, we're setting precedent with what we're doing. When you talk about the big users that potentially have tanks, okay?
Yeah, so it's, we're storing pools, I have a storage pot back there, and everybody.
I would go a maximum of 50% on the rebate. So he's getting a deal. We're saying, we welcome you into the community, but there is going to be a cost. Will that cover that whole water and sewer charge? Probably not, okay? We don't make that much money on water and sewer. We make a percentage, and that's how the water and sewer department stays afloat. Again, for people who don't know, your water and sewer department acts as a total different entity than the City of Utica itself. It must maintain and, well, it must raise enough revenue to keep it functioning and provide the service that we need here, so.
And part of the, both the water and the sewer fees are ready-to-serv fees, which are maintenance of the pipes, you know, maintaining our equipment at DPW, paying our folks that, you know, staff those positions. So it's not all just commodity charge. There's also other built-in infrastructure and wage costs involved in that, too. So I think we did the math, and I think it was, I believe, 1,100, $1,200 roughly, right, was the estimate for the 100,000 initial fill.
That's correct. And just so everybody knows, Legacy has no plans of ever emptying all those tanks all the way in. I feel like the benefits are bargaining outweigh the cost of this 1,159 dollars that we're asking for, what we're going to be bringing to the community in regards to a number of tanks.
This is just a hypothetical question. If you were to have a catastrophic failure of one of your tanks, and it dumps into the showroom floor, where does that water go?
That water would go down the sewer.
Goes down the sewer.
Does anyone else on council have any questions for Mr. Finley?
Is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to allow a 50% discount on strictly the sewer charge of the fill. Again, I'm sure we're going to, we're going to be metering that fill, okay? So if it's 110,000 gallons or 100,000, whatever the bill would be, we'll rebate discount 50% a one-time only.
Well, I don't think we're metering the fill separately.
Okay.
So based on 100,000 gallons, maybe we should just come up with a dollar amount, which 50% of 1200.
Well, they're going to, they're going to get a water bill. Flushing the toilets a few times while they're doing this isn't going to add a lot of charge. So you could say, I mean, can we go in there and read a meter right before they start doing it, Mr. Diamond? Okay, so I would suggest, part of my motion is, when they start to fill, that the DPW goes in and meters, reads the meter. When they're done, they read it again. Then we have what they use to fill those tanks, and we only give the 50% off of that amount. So if it's over 100, I'm not going to do a guess of, you know, it's $100,000 when, no offense, I have to rely on your numbers, okay? We might have 120,000 gallons in that tank. So we do one reading when they start, we do one immediately after they're done.
In my conversation with Mr. Finley, he said it could be a month-long process. Is that right, Mr. Finley? So it'd be?
That is correct.
Then during that time period, again, what they do, flushing the toilet, it gets added in. But I think that's the only fair thing to the city, to the residents that are paying the bills. I welcome their, into the community. I think you're going to be an asset, but that's where I stand. So maximum 50% with.
How many? I support that.
Can I just mention one more thing really quick before the council votes on this?
Sure.
It wasn't going to, I wasn't going to bring this up at this point in time, but we have estimates from engineers estimating somewhere around the vicinity of 365 to 500,000 gallons of evaporation of water in our facility, that we will be charged for water going down the sewer. It will be evaporated into the air. So that's another issue that we weren't even planning on, you know, bringing up and addressing at this point in time until we had a chance for the engineers to look at the facility actually operating, but that is their estimate right now. 365,000 gallons to 500,000 gallons of water that's evaporated that will never see the light of day of a sewer. And it's just one more thing I wanted to mention when we're talking about is 50%.
The 365,000 gallons that you're talking about evaporating, over what period of time? You're only putting in 100,000 gallons in.
One year.
I'm going to stand with my motion as it is, including reading before and reading after.
And that motion was supported by Councilwoman Torenzi.
Yes. Oh, it was supported?
Yes.
So there'll be a motion on the table.
All right. Motion by Sakura, support by Torenzi. Is there any further discussion from council?
How many tanks do you have to fill?
I would estimate around 30 to 40 exhibits.
Okay.
We don't like, we don't like to call them tanks, they're exhibits.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
No.
Mayor Calendino.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Finley.
Thank you, council.
We'll coordinate, Mr. Diamond will coordinate with you about this initial read and a final read then.
He's up.
Okay, we'll get in contact. Yeah, now we're seeing us. You turn that off. Scary.
Roll it here back, right. You've got to roll it back, it'll be scary.
All right. Next on the agenda is Department Reports. I'll kick things off. As we've mentioned already, this is the last meeting we're going to have with Councilman Mike Ryan and Councilman Ron Robinson. I just want to personally thank both of you for your service to the city. It has been a distinct pleasure serving with both of you. I think you both can be proud of some of the good things that we've all been able to do as a board. You will be missed, and I'm sure everyone would join me in wishing you both the best of luck in your future endeavors, so thank you so much. Also, this weekend, Saturday, hopefully the rain holds out, but our downtown Utica Christmas tree lighting celebration is scheduled. Our emcee for the event is Rube Raj from Fox 2 News. We have vocalist Vanessa Carr. If you've not heard her sing, she is phenomenal. We're going to have a visit from Jack Skellington and Sally from A Nightmare Before Christmas. The Utica High School marching band will be playing for us. The Dance Class for Kids, they're going to do a Christmas presentation, and of course, Santa Claus and fireworks right after Santa Claus comes and gets the key to the city. The basement of the library will also be having visits with Santa Claus for all of kids. So come on out Saturday, 7:00 PM at Memorial Park. It should be a great event. Does anyone else on council have anything?
I would just like to say ditto's on what the mayor said to Mr. Robinson and to Mike Ryan here. Congrats, so.
I'd just like to thank the board and the members of the Utica community, because it's just been an unbelievable experience the last couple of years. And I also want to add, if, for the people in the audience, if anybody's watching, I highly recommend, if you love this community, get involved, because it is, it's for everybody on this board, it's about this community first, so if you love Utica, get involved. Thank you.
And Ron's the guy who swore, "I don't want to get involved in politics." And he would catch me out in the mornings, smoking my cigar in my car in my driveway, walking his dog, and he would be asking all these questions about Utica, you know, "How can we do better?" and this and that. And finally, I'm like, "Ron, you need to run for council." And in the beginning, he's like, "Oh, no, no, that's not for me, that's not for me." And now he's going to be our state rep, so.
It's insane.
Excellent transformation, Ron.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't see it on the agenda, but I'm sure that you were going to take it. I just want to interrupt, but what about, could you introduce our newest elected council member?
Pardon me?
Our newest council member-elect.
Yep. Mr. Lubakis, welcome tonight.
Yes, sir. Raise your hand.
Stand up.
He'll be joining us up here in January.
Can we?
Awesome. Any other reports?
I just wanted to say thank you to the residents for trusting in me for the past four years. From when I very first started, I was, my entire, basically, the reason why I ran for city council was to bolster our city departments, because our city departments are the foundation of our city. It's why we existed, so we can provide services to our residents. And I hope that in the past four years that I made some positive changes. And I pass it on to somebody that can hopefully continue on with that legacy. And, uh, I do have to say, for Mr. Robinson, I will miss you as our crossing guard. It would be really hard for you to be a crossing guard all the way in Lansing, but I guess you'll have to find a way to make it happen. Um, also, I do want to still remind everyone that at our Christmas tree lighting, we're still, uh, the Utica Firefighters Foundation is still doing our Toys for Tots Stuff and Ambulance Drive through the United States Marine Corps. Uh, we'll be having the ambulance out there, um, with our couple guys from our Marine Corps unit from Selfridge, uh, that will be collecting toys out there. Um, we'll be still doing a raffle out there for some baskets. And all that money will be donated direct to the Toys for Tots program. Uh, for those that want to donate toys before the event, we still have boxes set up here in City Hall, the library, and as well as at a couple of our bars in town. If you do any of the donation for bars in town, for our Battle of the Bars, they could, uh, win the trophy, the traveling trophy that goes around to each one of the bars, so.
It's at steampunk now, right?
It's at steampunk right now. So we'll see who gets it, uh, this next year. So I haven't heard anything as far as who's in the lead. There's, uh, one of our, my subordinates is running that, so I'm not in the loop as far as who's in the lead, so we shall see what happens.
Excellent. All right, no reports tonight from Planning Commission Assessing or Building. Ms. Francis, report on the library.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to remind everybody, um, this Saturday as well, the library's got a couple of things going on. We do have our annual bake sale starting at five PM. This is actually our twentieth year doing it, so, um, we wouldn't have made it this long without our generous donations from all of our volunteers baking for us. So I hope it's the best one. I know I say that every year, but, you know. Uh, we also have, um, some Christmas activities starting at six PM. So anybody that wants to beat the rush and come before the Christmas tree lighting at seven can join us for family storytime Christmas activities, so. But yeah, I hope everybody can come. Hope to see every one of you there.
I'll be there.
Buying some trees.
Oh, I'll be there. Absolutely.
Thank you. Chief Volsec, uh, report on fire.
Yeah, Mayor and Council requesting tonight a sale of, uh, fire department fixed assets. We have three vehicles that we need to, uh, go to auction. A nineteen eighty-two Mack CF six hundred. I don't know, you want the VIN number? Two thousand seven Crown Vic or, and a two thousand fifteen Ford Explorer, which will be going to auction. And we've set on a reserve.
What are the reserves on those?
I haven't determined that yet.
When will the auction be held and where?
Uh, I'm looking at government dot com.
Okay, so it'll be on the online?
And it's, uh, um, no cost to the city, it's twelve percent to the buyer.
What was the name of it, government?
Government dot com. Govdeals dot com, I think it is.
Say, uh, motion to approve the sale?
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Secora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, the second item on the agenda, um, purchase of Rescue forty-two engine combo kit. This was, uh, budgeted for, uh, equipment purchases, one oh one, three three six, nine eight one, zero zero zero. To fill you in, this is a stabilization kit for any type of rollovers or machinery or building collapse. Makes the scene safer for rescuers and the firefighters and the people that are injured. The low bid was, uh, McQueen at a price of thirty, three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. And, uh, it's kind of a, I had a hard time just getting two bids because it's kind of a protected area vendor thing. McQueen's buying everybody up, so it's, uh, they're coming in low on everything all the time. So that is a low bid. I checked it online and everywhere. So that does include shipping.
So chief is looking for a motion to approve the purchase of one Rescue forty-two combo from the low bidder, McQueen, for the price of three thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. So moved?
Support.
Motion by Robinson, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan? Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report?
Yeah, we are also in the process of writing for an AFG grant for replacing all of our four-inch hose and three of our rip pics. And I think that was, uh, we can go up to a total of seventy-five thousand dollars with a five percent match, it would be thirty-seven fifty.
That would be fantastic.
So hopefully, we're in the process of it right now.
Are you staying with four-inch?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah. And I'd just like to remind everybody out there, it is Christmas season. Be careful with the use of extension cords. If you have a live tree, keep watering it. We don't need a fire, so Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for all that you do to get us going to good prices.
Chief Kaluzny?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, in your packet is a agenda item summary. And what this is, is for additional cabling, um, and an ice bridge for our dispatch towers. You've seen, the, uh, foundation has been poured out there, and the tower should start to arrive next Monday. And hopefully, within the next two or three weeks, it's gonna be up. With the relocation of the tower because of the gas lines, unfortunately, we weren't able to use the current cabling that are, is there. And trying to splice those cables and stuff is something that the state and Motorola really frowned against. So, um, unfortunately, we're gonna have to replace the cables and additional ice bridge. The money that I originally, uh, got approved for in September, I kinda included some of these unforeseen things in here. So the money that I'm asking for was already approved in September. It's money that I already had put away for the tower, just for these kind of contingencies and stuff. So I'd be looking for just requests to approve the purchase of the equipment and installation from JT Tower Service for five thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars.
So moved?
Support.
Motion by Secora, support by Deanne. Any discussion from council?
Does that include moving the parking spot sign for the mayor protest?
Did you find them a new spot?
I'm behind the garbage can.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report, chief?
Um, yes, I got a couple things. First, I want, I want to start off by thanking our local Target store, um, over at, uh, Home Chain over there. They came in today and donated about four hundred dollars worth of toys for the Toys for Tots drive. So if you look at the barrels, they're all full of toys. So I, you know, it was a very generous offer by Target to come and donate the toys and stuff, so, um, you know, like...
Thank you.
Like Councilman Ryan had said, you know, there's plenty of time, come in, and still, it's a great cause. And it's going to some much-needed kids out there. Also like to kinda let the public know, with, uh, holidays coming up and a lot of Christmas shopping, be careful on in the parking lots. You kinda turn into a Target if you start leaving a lot of bags, a lot of gifts and stuff in your vehicles. We do see an uprising, people breaking into vehicles, so just make sure you're conscious of it. Keep your packages or whatever you buy kinda concealed in your vehicle, so you don't have to come to a broken window. And all those gifts are now removed on your vehicle, so please be vigilant about that. Um, and lastly, as of Monday, I attended a, uh, grant seminar for some, uh, grant funding from the state of Michigan for cybersecurity stuff. So there's a large amount of money at the state of Michigan, specifically addressing some cyber threats within the city and stuff. So it's kinda the grant window is the end of this month. So if we are gonna apply, it's kind of a short window. So we have a meeting set up with our IT company. There, this is a zero-match grant. So the state of Michigan is actually picking up, it's a federal grant through FEMA. The state of Michigan is actually picking up the match portion, so it'd be at zero cost to the city. And there's substantial amount of money, and it's about a two-and-a-half-year window that it would cover these services and stuff. So me and city clerk are gonna be looking into this, so, uh, you know, after some conversations with the mayor, we'll see if it's something that we should apply to. But I just wanna kinda let council and mayor know what's on my radar here, as we finish up the end of the year.
So you have to apply by December thirty-first?
To be eligible for this funding window. Um, and like I said, it, there's a good substantial amount of money. It does continue on, but there's less fun. So, um, we'll kinda look at it, see what the costs are, and see if it's something we can do. If not, I'll apply at the next window, which won't be till next October.
Well, good luck. You have twenty-one days.
Yep.
Get on it.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Diamond, DPW.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you, I have one item, and it's for replacement of three-unit heaters in our DPW garage and bays. They were inspected and deemed dangerous due to the broken heat exchangers. So they do require replacing, and they, we do not have, uh, heat in those three areas right now. Two of them are in the garage itself, where a street and a water vehicle are, and one is in the shop bay where one of our parks vehicle is. So I did obtain three quotes that I've been talking about for the last couple council meetings, finally got, um, three quotes. So I'm looking for a motion from council to approve the low bid from Joseph Moore Heating and Cooling LLC for replacements of the three-unit heaters and diagnose the tubular heating unit in the garage bay, in the shop bay for nine thousand four hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-eight cents, plus a ten percent contingency for uninspected issues, for a total of ten thousand and five hundred dollars, which would be divided equally from the streets, water, sewer, and parks, uh, building and maintenance GLs, which are one oh one, four four one, nine three seven, zero zero zero, which is streets, five nine two, five three six, nine three seven, zero zero zero, which is water and sewer, and one oh one, seven five one, nine three seven, zero zero zero, uh, which is parks, for thirty-five hundred dollars each.
So moved? Support.
Motion by Deanne, support by Ryan. Any discussion from...
I think it was Terrencey had it.
It was Miss Terrencey.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Ryan. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. The projects we have going on, uh, we have our TMF, um, line replacement grant, which is the money that we had to help with our service line inspections, getting all the mailings out for our letters that have been sent for those who have lead, uh, service lines, galvanized service lines, or still unknown. Uh, I just wanted to remind council and our residents that we do not have lead in our water. We have lead service lines or galvanized lines. The verbiage in the letters was, um, required by Eagle, by the state. Uh, I know we've got a couple phone calls of people being scared that we have lead in our water. Unfortunately, we just had to use their wording to say the dangerous effects of lead in our water. But we do test yearly, and we have passed yearly. So just wanted to remind people of that. Anyone who's got those letters, some have sent them in already. HRC, our engineering firm, will be contacting to schedule, um, and interior, and where they can sign the agreements and get them on the schedule for the replacements funded by the city and through our grants to do that. So it will be nothing on the resident itself. With that, we had our pre-con meeting with DeAngelo Brothers last week, who is the contractor that we, um, piggybacked on with Oakland County and Sacwa, that gave us their two thousand twenty pricing, which is an excellent deal for us, and will hopefully be able to get more than, um, after we find out through the unknowns that we can get more than the original hundred and ten that we are starting with. Plan on starting that first of the year. Weather-dependent, we will start after we get fifteen scheduled. So they want to come in because they're expecting to do roughly about five a day. If we can get fifteen scheduled on one street, then they can get them done a little bit quicker. But, uh, as soon as we get fifteen scheduled, we're gonna have them come in, and they're gonna, um, hammer them out. So all good things for that. The concrete pavement repair on North Point, the sidewalks, that's all completed. Uh, we did get our final permit inspection from the county. Just got the email today, and that was all approved, so that's good. The median is up. We've gotten some complaints, gotten some, you know, um, appraisal, shall we say, for it. Uh, I did have my guys go out today, and we painted just the, um, the rounded edges of the median because I noticed, I come into work early, so you can tell, you can't really tell where that curb starts. So we painted it yellow today, so now you can, it does pop a little bit in the dark at least. I mean, you have ten feet of, of, of the, um, barrier, the delineators before then, but an added, an added safety measure. Uh, Davis Street Station is complete. That's been working great. Luckily, everything is on the phone, so that is, that's, that's good. Anytime there's an issue, um, I can see what's going on on the phone before I even have to call anybody in. I'm hoping next budget that we can get the same, um, system in our other two, so we can have them all on this mission. Uh, and everything will be, you know, through an app. Uh, it's a great thing. And, um, I'm actually glad that they were able to, weren't able to get the one that we have in the other ones because they were a little outdated and went for the, for the new system, so that's a great thing. We're waiting on our final budget expenditures for the sewer rehab project and for, um, and for that one. And then Pioneer Park, they are still scheduled to pour the cement by December twentieth, weather permitting. I think they're gonna be able to. If not, we will have construction fencing put around that hole, a little bit safer than the fencing that's in it now. Uh, want to thank Mr. Dombrowski, Tom Dombrowski, for the Christmas tree donation. Uh, we went and picked that up last Friday. It is in its stand, and lights are starting to put on today. Uh, we've had a, a rash of water main breaks, um, since last council meeting. We've had one, um, at Ketting in Kensington, one at Kemp, um, just, uh, east of the, or, just south of, just east of the Dead End there with, and Canal, Crisman in Utica. And we just had one that came in this afternoon at Klinghammer and Nancy. Waiting on Mistiggs, um, that one will be repaired tomorrow. Had some water operator training today. I got, um, some free classes for the three, three of our water operators, so no cost to the city on that, so, um, they, that gets renewed every three years. So after these classes this week, everybody will be set for their three years, along with myself. Starting talks with the flower baskets, um, with Joe. We've, we've kinda played phone tag for a little bit, but that is in discussion to get pricing on Utica on, for Auburn and Cass. Uh, we did, uh, have receipt of our Ferndale vehicles, so the, the two dump trucks and the Vector truck. They do need a little bit of love because obviously they were sitting for a little bit, so we're working on that. The salt truck should be up and running for the next, this week. Uh, we had, we had an air tank that we need to replace on it and a couple tires. So those will be good, so nice to have those in our, in our fleet. Uh, you saw that the two letters from Ken Ponkowski, who has had thirty-one years of service with the city of Utica, Ricky Smith, who has just over twenty-six years of service. They're gonna be, you know, that's, that's a lot of knowledge leaving, uh, leaving us, so, um, we, I do have a, um, employee that accepted the job offer. He actually came from Gross Point, uh, DPW, and he is gonna be starting January fifth. And another one was offered to another individual, but he ended up turning it down. It was too much of a pay cut for him. Um, I do have a third one that I'm gonna be bringing in again, and we do have a couple other, um, resumes that have trickled in, so I don't think we'll have an issue filling it. Obviously, the lights and reeds are all up and ready to go for the holiday. We'll be ready to go for the Christmas, um, the tree lighting. Uh, the comfort stations in the water wheels all been winterized, winterized, so that's good to go. And, uh, last thing is, congrats to Councilman Robinson, state rep, and thank you, uh, Councilman Ryan, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Diamond?
No, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Yeah, good job, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Paternoster?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have in your packet a request from me, uh, for a budget amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-five general fund budget. Uh, GL account number one oh one, two six one, eight zero eight, triple zero, audit. The amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars for additional fees incurred on the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit.
So Mr. Paternoster was looking for a motion to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-five general fund budget audit GL account one oh one, two six one, eight oh eight, zero 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 by seven thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved?
Support.
Motion by Terrencey, support by Secora. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Secora?
Yes.
Terrencey?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Deanne?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino?
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report tonight, sir?
Nothing else to report.
And I think, are you gonna stick around for the next?
Yes, I will.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Uh, Mayor and Council, we have, um, on the agenda PA one fifty-two medical benefits for calendar year twenty twenty-five. I have asked, um, our treasurer to stay and help, uh, to more easily explain this, but you'll see that we, the city is limited in the amount that it may expend on healthcare costs for employees. And under the hard cap provisions that were adopted by the city in August of twenty thirteen, employees must pick up the difference between the actual premium expense and the state-determined caps. Um, we haven't had to pay in several years, but this is a year that we did exceed that hard cap. So retirees will also, uh, affected retirees will also pay the same amount as active employees. Uh, for calendar year twenty twenty-five, the recommended contribution per employee per month for a single employee is forty dollars, a two-person plan is sixty dollars, and a family plan is a hundred and twenty dollars. But Mr. Paternoster can help explain that better if, uh, you have any questions.
Did you have anything to add, Mr. Paternoster?
Not at this moment.
So we'd be looking for a motion to adopt the calendar year twenty twenty-five employee contribution rates for two thousand eleven PA one fifty-two compliance, as recommended per employee per month. Uh, and as Madam Clerk mentioned, single forty dollars, two-person sixty dollars, and family a hundred and twenty dollars.
I'll make a motion to adopt that schedule.
Support.
Motion by Secora, support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council?
Nobody likes the increases. Nobody likes the idea that you have to pass it on to somebody. In my company, I have a hundred percent employee or employer-paid policy, and my rates went up fourteen percent this year. So this increase, um, nobody likes it, but for the pretty darn good policy you have, which is better than what I have, it's minuscule. We can then go into next year, look where it's at, and look at other... We can then go into next year, look where it's at and look at other policies, other companies and that, so.
Yeah, and if you look in your packet, the cost to the city went up 14.5% if I'm looking at the right schedule. And the state only raised the hard cap amount.
0.2%.
0.2%, 0.2%. So that's where that difference comes. Any further discussion from council?
No, we hate to do it, but.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Anything else to report, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, just a few things. I did want to remind our residents and council if they want to come in. City Hall is open between now and the end of the year. We're just closed Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. So anybody that needs us, we're here. I did want to thank those of you who reached out last month when I had pneumonia and thank my trusty deputy clerk for stepping in day of and handling very well last month's meeting. I do appreciate that. We have one more thing on our list. Nope? Okay, I think that's all I had. I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, report from Parks and Rec tonight?
Just wanted to remind council that we are still working on the new plan for Parks and Rec. We did just get an email today, just a couple little tweaks and it should be ready for next month's council. So just letting you guys know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those who are still here, and congratulations again, Ron, and we will miss you, Mike.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're anxiously awaiting that master plan to be done so we can get grants.
Yes.
Our city attorney, Ms. McGrath.
I am no official business mayor and council, but I too would like to thank Councilman Ryan for his service to the city and also thank Councilman Robinson both for his service to the city and congratulate him on his future endeavors.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. At this point, we open up the floor for communication from the public for any item at all. Doesn't even have to be on the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to address with council, feel free. Everyone will be awarded three minutes to speak. Yep, speak, just go to the podium, sir. Yep, and if you could give your name and address.
Louis Doljevic, I'm from Shelby Township, 537-33-Wire-Drive. And where we're here for, obviously, it's not in Tangent, but we want to go through a little bit and see. We got three properties, three lots on Shelby Road there, and we were concerned if, we are in Septic right now. We were going to build three houses at Septic, but we were hoping that you guys can get us approval to be connected with your guys' city sewers. So we can connect with city Utica. And we understand that's a fee for both cities, with the township Shelby and Utica. So we would think if it's possible to work it out, something with you guys. So we had a drawing, a plot plan, everything with the Septic, but then we figured out, we found out there's a sewers there and say, well, nothing hurts to ask.
Sure, sure. We're not going to be able to vote on that now. This is just a communication.
Communication, I understand. I just, just something, maybe is there a chance, I don't know how my goodness to say this, but the next meeting that's in January.
Yep.
And that's going to put us another month back because the Shelby needs some kind of approval from you guys for us to go forward with the permits for.
And do we have all your documents and information?
We send as much as we have and we got, and if it needs more, we would be more than happy to work with you guys if it's something that's possible to be done.
Is there, again, I can rely on Mr. Diamond on this one. So you have a set of plans from him or something to look at?
We have spoke about a month ago, month and a half ago. I did, I did confirm them that we did have a sewer there, obviously. It's three parcels just past the American Legion is where they have them. It was one parcel, they already have it split with Shelby and the county, so there are three parcels. He did, oh, I'm sorry. They did send everything. We missed the email for today's meeting, so they were ready to go today for it. Because of the billing issues that we have with the water only and sewer only through Shelby, it was suggested that they bring it to council for approval. We have the sewer line there. We would be able to handle three houses on it. We wouldn't have any issues with it. Just looking for the approval to start. This would just start talks with Shelby because then we would have to go into an agreement with Shelby with that. I believe there's other agreements prior to me for this type of, even their business, your business is on Van Dyke.
Yes.
And they have the same thing right now where they're on.
We've been like that for 20 years.
Utica sewer, so.
Is there the ability for us to, I guess, give an approval to enter into discussion and then come back? I mean, I don't.
I don't see it getting approved by council till next meeting. I haven't really reviewed anything yet myself. I'd like to talk to Mr. Diamond about it and then we could present it formally at council.
Okay, but I mean, you folks can, I'm just saying, you can look at this and see what needs to be done, just so we don't lose another month.
Right, right. I don't think there'd be any issues with the tap itself with our sewer. They definitely cannot tap into Shelby, it's too far. That's why their original plans are for Septic, but because they found out, and I sent them the, our, where our line is, the size of it, where they could, where they could tap in, everything, I sent them everything they needed on our end so they can at least get the ball rolling further. So I don't think there'd be an issue. It'll be, you know, moving forward with Shelby in an agreement and how billing is done, And we apologize them, you know, for missing that. Both Lori and I both, city clerk and I both missed the email for them today because I asked her right before or end of the day or midday if she got anything from Sansone, and that's when she looked. And it was there, she just obviously missed it. So we apologize. We're sorry for moving you back another month, but on our end, I don't think there's an issue with, obviously, with the sewer tap. It can be done. It would not overload our system over there, you know, it would be good. It's just moving forward with the agreement with Shelby.
We will work on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to address council?
Is this the public part?
You walked right in right at the.
Perfect timing.
Perfect time. If you could state your name and address.
Absolutely. Carrie Thomas, good evening, everybody. 45224 Cass Avenue. Good evening, Calendrino and council members. I'm here tonight to ask whether the council would look at for next year in 2025 potentially budgeting to put the flowers back downtown. The flags are lovely, they really are. They've got a heritage outlook, which adds to our historic city. They're not quite the same as having those beautiful flowers, so.
You should have come earlier because we've already talked about it.
Ah! Shut up!
We're working on flowers along Auburn and Cass.
Wonderful, thank you.
To see if we can manage that and the cost that's involved. We're also looking at a different type of flower pot that can hold a reserve of water so that we don't have to pay someone to water them every day like we did previously. If that works out and we can keep the costs under control, then we'll reconsider adding Van Dyke, but for now, in the spring, we're just looking at Auburn and Cass.
Auburn and Cass, okay, great, thanks, yeah. I know, I heard something like $15,000 was the old number, right? Yeah.
13, I think it was 13.
Yeah, that's.
But it was rising every year.
Yeah, I'm sure, great. All right, well, thanks. I couldn't have asked for better timing. What a great day.
Anyone else from the public?
We have two people that have put their names in for the open council position. I think it would be a great time if you want to get up and introduce yourselves and tell us something. You got three minutes because then people learn about you and we learn about you.
Paul Weaver, I live at 7840 Chapperton Street. Been a resident of Utica for 20 years. Never really thought about getting into politics, Ron, similar to you. After being here 20 years, just wanted to get involved and give back to the community. I think starting at home, starting on your street, starting in your city, starting in your county, state, and then local or federal government, not that I'm going that far, but I got to make a difference at home first before you can expect a difference somewhere else, so. And if, as I've said to Gus before, if I don't work out at this time, I still want to get involved with the city, whether it's one of the planning commissions or something else. So thanks for the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, my name is Joel DeFrent, 7900 Ruby Street. Ron's neighbor, that's how I found out about this. Been a resident here for 10 years now. Just seemed like something that I would enjoy doing potentially. I like living in the city of Utica. I use our parks frequently and frequent downtown area a lot, restaurants. And just like being involved. In college, I put on a charity car show, co-founded that with a friend of mine and ran that for a number of years. Also was involved in a fraternity where we had meetings like this regularly and, yeah, just kind of looking for a change of pace. 38, single, work from home, five days a week, so, yeah. That's it. Any questions, feel free to talk to me afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for throwing your hats in and just so the public understands that this is for a vacancy that we're going to have because of Councilman Robinson's.
It's my fault.
Yeah, it's all your fault.
It's all your fault.
You're making us work. We appreciate both you. Anyone else in the public that would like to speak to council? All right, if not, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Deion.
Support.
Support by Terrencey. Any discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Terrencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.